I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to ask if we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is probably better so everybody can hear me, I'm not yelling. Everybody in the back can hear okay? Alright, so the purpose of this meeting is a public hearing to discuss the bond ordinance. So at the town meeting back in May, the town budget was approved and capital expenditures that we will discuss this evening, including roads, were approved to spend at town meeting. The purpose of this meeting is we have to bond for those funds and we need to have a public hearing for that and actually pass a bond ordinance to fund those projects that are already approved. So what I'm going to ask, Joe Santiponce is here from the Board of Finance, I'm going to ask him to go through the presentation of those projects that were approved at the town meeting, that approved our budget back in May, just so that everybody's on the same page, and then have different presenters talk about different items, and then at the end we'll take questions, okay? Alright, Joe, go ahead.
Alright, you can go. Next slide. So the ordinance, and we'll talk about this in more detail when we get to the town meeting, but the ordinance is authorizing the issue of bonds and notes of the town in the amount of $7,725,000 to finance certain capital improvement projects. To the bond financing plan, this is what was approved at the town meeting. So this is the list of projects. We'll talk about the grant amount in a few different places, but there's a grant amount, there's the estimated town cost, a couple of projects we had previously funded in 2018, the balance of the project needs to be funded, and then what we're proposing, the same $7,250,000 funding with the bond proceeds. Again, the schedule was presented at the town meeting, it just kind of breaks down the grants and it kind of gives you a total looking at by doing these bonds and these projects, the town's getting $7.3 million of state and federal money to complete those five projects up there on the sidewalks, a couple of different bridges, road reconstruction, bonding, the bond funding by asset type, some of its equipment improvements, a bunch of these vehicles, the infrastructure item, and then the biggest part of it is roads, continue improving our roads. So project descriptions. Yeah, Liz can kind of give you a little bit more background. I do have just a brief description, but give some background on these projects.
Alright, so the Tylerville sidewalk is a TAP grant that the town applied for and we received for $1,570,000. There is, it's an 80/20 match, and so the town needs to fund $290,000. The purpose of that sidewalk is for a sidewalk to go down Bridge Street, all the way from bridge at where the light is, where 154 connects with bridge, all the way down through Eagle Landing, all the way down to the Swing Bridge. And a side note, the town has applied for a $17 million federal grant with East Hattam that we're hoping to put sidewalks on the Swing Bridge. Part of the problem going into Eagle Landing for anyone is that it's very dangerous to cross the road from Eagle Landing to get to the other side of the street, whether they want to go to Dunkin' Donuts or they want to go to the merchant store that's there. And unfortunately, we can't put crosswalks in due to state regulations, so this is one of the reasons why we applied to have the sidewalk put in. This is a process that we went through and was approved for this sidewalk. Again, we're looking for $290,000 of the 20% match that the town needs to pay for. The other piece of it is the Dublin Hill Bridge. Many residents know and I see that are here that we are working on a bridge right now. There is no bridge. Unfortunately, they have to do a very serious detour that we've worked on for a long time. We have a new bridge being built, and most of the project was funded in past capital budgets at town meeting. We broke it out, again, to work for budgetary purposes and to make sure taxes didn't go up at the mill rate, so we still need to remain to fund $114,500 for the current Dublin Hill Bridge project that we're working on. The last, the next is a Lotha project. That is a project that we did, that we applied for, that application's been in for many, many years. That's funding that we get from the state of Connecticut that we're bid for for many other towns. There's 17 towns that are part of the RiverCog, where we look for transportation funding and road improvements from the state. The great part about this is it's 100% fund to pay for the work. The only part that we need to pay for is the engineering. And the estimate from the engineering firm on this project is $200,000. So we're looking for $200,000 for Lotha. Depending upon when the bond gets underway, we'll get work going on Candlewood Hill Road. Candlewood Hill needs quite a bit of work, it'll be done in many phases. This is for the lower part of Candlewood Hill, where Higgins Center is, starting where it intersects with 154 and 81 and running down. There is another Lotha grant that the town has in process right now to hopefully receive, and this is a significant grant that we're getting that's close to $3 million. The other piece that we're looking to fund is the Beaver Road, Meadow Road culvert. There's a weight restriction right now on Beaver Meadow Road. Fire trucks cannot go over Beaver Meadow Road. There's a culvert that is starting to disintegrate, it's starting to come down. Again, it's a project that needs to be done. We were able to apply for funding through the state, it's a 50/50 match, so the project costs $670,000. We need another $335,000 to do. Again, it's, and the engineering stage is ready to go, we just need to have the funding there so that we can get going on that project. And then the last piece is a connectivity grant that Liz Glidden, when she was town planner, applied for in 2017, and we were actually turned down for this grant. We did not get it. The sidewalks that are in front of the library that are on 154 that the state put in, the state's famous for putting things in and then the town has to maintain them, they're also not up to par for ADA improvement. So we were given a flat amount of $400,000. So we had Jacobson, who is our town engineer, go out and measure for that to see the work that needed to be done, and there's a section that we can do. Again, the $400,000 will cover that. The engineering design cost, which is $70,750, is not covered by the grant. We received word in January, two days before Malloy left office, every town that was turned down for the connectivity grant was given the connectivity grant that they requested. So that was funding that came in that we didn't anticipate to come in, that we'd like to be able to improve those sidewalks for, which have all been part of our capital plan. So it's important to reiterate that these are not new projects, these are all projects that have gone through the capital plan process, that have gone through the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, and it's all part of our capital plan that we're working on.
Thank you. The next group of projects are fire department projects. I'd like to invite Scott and Bob and Laura to kind of give a little bit more detailed information that I have up here on these projects, particularly the bigger one, the radio system.
Scott?
The couple of their stations too. First one is the parking lot replacement. The parking lot was scheduled to be replaced 14 years ago. They did some patchwork and did not replace it. It's an needed replacement now. The second is rescue tool replacement. That's for the hydraulic rescue tools on all the trucks here in Hattam side. The third item there is the radio system replacement. That's for all of our portable radios, mobile radios, both of which we purchased in 2003 and 2004 through grants at that time of the campaign. The last item being SCBA replacement or air pack replacement. That's for the air packs here in Hattam that are quite frankly currently used. Last one is having that firehouse parking replacement. That's was repaid, repaid in relation to that parking lot.
Bob McGarry, I'm having that part. That project actually hasn't been done, it's completed a couple of weeks ago. Town was able to move it up. Of opportunities from the contractors.
Next group of projects is several Public Works vehicles. Scott?
Yes.
Chris, sorry. Help me out with this one, it's supposed to give us a little bit more detail.
There are four freightliner 114SDs up there. Those will be frontline trucks for us. They'll be replacing older trucks that were currently on the road. Some of those trucks are 17 years old. A total of eight frontline trucks, four or 12 years of 16, 12 to 16 years old. So those are four of our eight frontline trucks that are 12 to 16 years old. And four of those, four more of those trucks are, of course, one to seven years. We've replaced two since I've gotten here. The Ford F-550, the all season dumps, those are, we use those every day in Public Works, as well as plow trucks for smaller roads, gravel roads. Those trucks are vitally important to us as well. The backup, again, we're replacing a 25-year-old backup. Not good to be operating a 25-year-old backup in a municipal setting. So all frontline trucks and a well-needed backup. Any questions?
No questions, sorry.
Okay, this next slide is some perspective on the pavement management report that we had an engineering company do. It was issued in May of 2018. Their estimate at that point in time and the various different things that needed to be done to the roads, such as paving or chip sale and that type of thing, was $14.2 million. Doing a rough estimate of what we anticipate being completed by the end of this month related to roads on that list is about $5.1 million. That means about $9.1 million from that report, estimated roads that need to be completed. Construction cost index is about 2% increase since by 1418, so looking at about $9.3 million of improvements that still need to be done to the town roads. And that's assuming nothing else goes wrong. So this next slide, I'm just putting up here, so this is all the detail, the other one's a little bit more summarized, but this is the status of the last bond issue we did for roads, the $6,480,000. So the first column is showing you the original appropriation and there were transfers done as additional roads were added because other roads came in low cost, then running out for the next, the next four years of what the actual expenditures were by each road, and then what the balance is of the rating roads. So you can see, if you just go to the next slide, that's kind of how it was built and all that data. This is just summarize, here's the adjusted appropriation, here's the cumulative expenditures to date, what the balance is, and then you can see the red is estimated completion by the end of the month, so there's about $1,950,000 left from that original bond issue, and the majority of all that's expected to be spent, maybe not paid, but spent by 831. So there's no more money to be allocated or no additional roads that can be done with that previous bond issue, which is why we're looking at doing another bond issue to continue to improve the roads. So this is, this is no different than the last bond issue, so this is right from the resolution that we'll be looking at at the town meeting. So out of that three million, $675,000, the Board of Selectmen's authorized to designate the roads, determine the specific scope of particular sort of projects. They can reduce or modify the scope of the projects, and the appropriation may be spent on projects as reduced or modified. They may reallocate among the projects as needed. So this, again, this is the same process that we follow from the $6,480,000 fund for roads that we did. So bonding strategy, just why issue bonds, a lot of time to catch up on some of the capital items that haven't been funded in prior years. We see how old some of the trucks are. We all have been talking about roads since I entered town. So this allows some ability to catch up and attempt to level out capital. So we're kind of beyond, unfortunately, the pay-as-you-go funding without significant tax increases. So certainly can be done, but taxes would have to go up to be able to provide the cash to pay for these projects. So we're again taking advantage of significant grants available, $7.3 million. Avoid the need for emergency capital replacements, especially with public safety related, such as the bridge and the plow trucks going down and those type of things. Take advantage of some of the current discounted pricing, some of the items are in this bond package, there's some discounted pricing that would expire and weren't able to do this in the next few months. Take advantage of lower interest rates, get the bond for now with interest rates below and lock in that rate. And again, to level out the capital planning, capital plan funding needs and to be able to do more without issuing bonds by doing this catch-up. Part of the catch-up strategy, again, that leads to managing the tax increase. So bonding allows you kind of installment plan versus the pay-as-you-go. So looking at what's still in front of us, so this is if we approve this bonding, we would have, we still have $9 million of non-road capital items. Again, that's assuming we don't add any, that's based on the capital plan that we just completed for during the 2020 budget, roads. And if you take the bonding we have here, we still have $5.6 million of the roads off that list to be done, and the total would be $14 million. Again, this doesn't include any projects that are not in the capital plan, Public Works Garage, or anything with Higgins Center. Again, even after the bonding, if you look at those first three years, we still have some challenges with capital requests and scheduled replacements of $1.9 million, $1.7 million, $1.3 million. After that, we kind of level out. The majority of those are some of the fire and rescue trucks that weren't replaced again on schedule, so now they're all compressing to be needed to be replaced in a tight timeframe instead of how they originally planned, they were spaced out a lot farther. So the next slide would be, again, just to put out to win the bonding, without funding that $7 million, and now the number is much more higher, it's $20 million. Again, so even with this funding, we still do have some challenges to fund capital, and then while still trying, again, to manage the tax rate and keep it at a reasonable level. Chris can help me a little bit on this, but some of the Public Works vehicles we talked about, the reason is, is the maintenance costs, and to kind of allow us to get back on a more level replaceable schedule. So if we're replacing a truck every year or every other year on a normal cycle, then we wouldn't be requesting to do this many all in one year, but this would allow us to kind of get on a normal cycle and keep the trucks in working order. So maintenance costs, a total of $56,000 over the past three years for just three trucks. So that would just continue, so instead of investing a new truck, we're paying maintenance, which really is no return on that investment. And then, as we talked about, I've been talking about continuing to improve the condition of the roads, which is about $3.6 million. Alright, so that's an overview of the bond package. Happy to answer any questions?
Are those bonds from staggered maturities?
Yes. I mean, that hasn't been done, but once we go through bond council, I thought they would be staggered. He asked whether the bonds would have staggered maturities.
Will they answer again?
Yes. Yes, the actual structuring hasn't, you know, until we actually go to bond, we're ready, the actual binding maturity schedule hasn't been determined, but they would be staggered.
Are we still paying for the lawn dish and for the dump?
Yes.
Is there a mistletoe of roads that are included in this next bond proposal?
So...
Or we can read?
It's been hours trying to get that as big as possible, there's just too much information.
We are asking what new roads, right?
Yes.
Sorry, too many papers. Okay, so I'm going to give you probably a little longer answer than what you wanted on it, but I want to go back and explain. So for many years, the Board of Finance heard about the condition of the roads in town. So instead of whoever was in office deciding what roads were going to get fixed and what roads were going to get paved, we hired an independent reporting company called VHB, who did a road study of every single road in the town of Hattam. And then he gave it to us as a guide, so it's an estimate of what needs possible drainage, what might need crack seal, what might need fill and mill and fill. There's a bunch of things which total over $14 million. So this was a great template, this is on the town website for everybody to see under Public Works, so you can see the index of where your road is. Fortunately or unfortunately, the majority of our roads, and if you think of zero being bad, like you were in school, and 100 being good, are at a 55% index or lower. So many, many of our roads are in desperate need of repair, as many of you know, because if that's the one call I get into the first selectmen's office, that's the call I get several times a week. So what we did is, we did the first set of roads, which Joe showed you up here, and some of them needed more work than others, so we were fortunate. So there were a list of roads that we initially indicated in that list, and there was some money left over because some projects came in under budget, and some things didn't need as much work as we thought. And then there were some roads, like McTae Section 3, that we just finished, I'm sorry, McTae Section 1, that ended up needing several hundred thousand dollars more work because there was a natural spring in the underground, so that costing us a lot more money. So what I did is, I went back to notes from back from when Paul DiStefano was in office, and some of the roads that need to be addressed. Chris Corsa also did a list, so I just want everyone to know, you can all look at your road, you can see what the index is. This I took from Chris's list and I created, it's just a simple Excel sheet that needs to be taken, that roads that need reclaim, paving, chip sale, mill and fill. This is not even all the roads, and I come to about another $6.2 million, but some of the roads, I will read them to you. What's going to happen is the Public Works Director, who actually is the first selectman, and the Assistant Public Works Director with the engineers, we're going to look at what the feeder roads are, where there's a lot of traffic. That doesn't mean if you live on a road with five houses, we're not going to take care of your road, but we have to look at the roads where most of the construction is being done. So there's a number of roads, WFS is closing out at the end of the year, and they really did a lot of rough work on Cedar Lake and Turkey Hill and Wick Hill and all those roads, so they're there. Beaver Meadow is, Candlewood Hills, Cedar Lake, Christian Hill, still needs more work, we're doing drainage on that now. The Dublin Hill Bridge is being replaced, we're looking to do Dublin Hill, High Street, Hubbard, Lake, Little City, Maple Avenue, East and West, Skunk, Missouri, Fair Road. There's, I could go on and on. The problem is, it's just like when we did this bond appropriation, even though we appropriated for $6.4 million, we can't tear all the roads up at the same time, nor do we have the contractors who are going to, we know do good work and are going to be competitive. So what we do is, we try to get the projects ready to go, they know when they're going to go out, so they can bid on them, and lots of times, which is why we've ended up with better pricing. So to answer your question in a long way, yes, we have a report to tell us. The goal is to get the index up for everything. Some of them don't need major work, but there's, I mean, just the part of Candlewood Hill alone, and that's not including the bond that we just got from the state for $3 million, and the other bond we're looking for, just to do the road in Candlewood Hill is over a million dollars. So there's a lot of roads that need to be addressed, and this will all be voted on, the Board of Selectmen through the bond ordinance, just as we did the last one, has the authority to put all these roads in place. And again, it'll be looked at by condition, a lot of them need drainage, and it'll be looked by the amount of traffic. So if we look at our feeder roads, and what do I mean by that, where people feed out to the highways and to the interstates, Christian Hill, Candlewood Hill, not Christian Hill, I'm sorry, Candlewood Hill, Little City Road, Beaver Meadow Road are highly traveled roads, those are the roads that we need to focus on first and then work our way in. So I hope I answered your question.
Yes.
Chris, you're on, before we go into the public works meeting. What do you want to share about the trucks? Why don't we use them more when we're not building roads?
The Public Works trucks?
Yeah, what are they used for?
They are used for that repair. Chris can probably speak better, so they plow the snow, they clean the catch basins, I mean, there's a number of things that we do. What the town crew also does do, we purchased a piece of equipment about a year or so ago for the town crew to start to do some drainage work, because that's our biggest problem. We can't just keep putting pavement over the roads and not fix what's going on underneath. So the town crew's been working on that.
What are they, the Ford's, those four, they're all, I've never seen the names, not a dump truck. What is, where does it, look like? Is it a dump truck?
Which ones are your...
Which ones are your...
The first four, the...
114SD, that's just Freightliner's model, it's a dump truck.
It's a dump truck, okay.
Yes.
During the budget vote that we had, that came in June, I believe it was?
May.
May. Why wasn't this money included in the budget at that point? So why are we voting on a bond tonight with this money that should have already been included in the budget?
It was included in the budget. We're, this is just...
So why are we voting on it?
Because we're required by, and the bond council's here, legally, we have to have a public hearing and a town meeting to approve the issuance of bonds. That's how we do it. That's how we did it for the roads the last time.
So technically, the money's already approved?
The money has been approved, yes.
The appropriation.
The appropriation, I'm sorry. Mike is correct to me. The appropriation to spend this money was approved at the town meeting for the budget, yes. Yes.
I have a question for the park, for the, 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 for the,
First off, just in comparison, Middletown just spent $14 million dollars replacing their radio system. East Haddon just spent $3 million dollars replacing it, just for its instance. So what we are doing, we look at it two different ways. One, replacing the existing repeaters that are up on power, the infrastructure, let's say, not the physical radius that we cut, but the actual infrastructure. And then also purchasing to do, you know, can't have radios, radios in the trucks, that type of thing. Also, just recently, the state has come up and has offered a, what they're calling a public safety radio system, that they're offering the towns. Use of basically space on their radio system, the 800 digital system. We currently operate on UHF both sides of the grid, and in Haddon, that also loaded. Go onto that system, does not cost the town anything to use the state system. Many of the towns around us are going to do that, and we actually have been testing it in town also. But in doing that also, if we chose that, we would not have to upgrade infrastructure in town, but we would have to upgrade everything greatly, which we're looking to do anyways because the radios are, most of them are on 2003, 2004, which is well beyond their life expectancy. A portable radio on the state system, about $5,600. A radio for a truck is about $6,000.
For one radio? I asked the same question. They're expensive.
We're, with doing that, city Middletown, when they purchased all their radios, they got, they went up the bid, and they got a Motorola, a 51% discount on the radios. That bid is open to any mutual aid company around them, which we will be available to until their system is accepted, meaning it's completed for Motorola. That will run out in about a month. So if we didn't, we are trying to tack on to that bid to save that money. If we did not, we can tack on to the state bid for the discount on radios, but that's only 24%.
So this $800,000 number is for discounts?
No, not with it.
With the discount?
Yep, I don't know if this is Joe or you. First, I'd like to say that for a hearing of something of this magnitude, it's far as $7 million. So we'd be helpful next time to do the hearing two weeks before the town meeting, or at least go to a referendum after the town hearing. It's hard squishing things in a half hour for everyone to absorb. Seeing everything is hard, difficult, you know, the slides go fast, so next time, maybe it might be helpful to do it two weeks in advance. So the bond council, I'm just looking what the cost is to actually bond, bond council bond preparation, whatever we have to pay. We have a number, because I haven't seen that anywhere yet.
Last time, it was $111,000.
Okay, so $111,000 to pay for us to just bond?
Yes, Mike would like to answer your question.
Okay.
I can, I can, I want you to answer it.
Yep.
I'm like to tell them from the law room of uptight Kelly Spellicy and the law council to the town, I can just answer that question generally. It really depends on how many issues that you have. So that's what Joe was referring to, in terms of the structure of the bonds hadn't been determined yet. The town officials, with the assistance of the municipal advisor, will actually put together kind of a schedule in terms of when we anticipate bonds would be issued. So, you know, depending upon if you have three issues or four issues, or you have notes that are issued and then bonds, that will determine like what the issuance costs are, because each time that you issue, you can have separate costs, right? There's costs associated with getting a rating from the rating agencies. There's a cost associated with going to the public in terms of the offering document, okay? So there are those costs, but it hasn't been determined yet as to what the aggregate amount of those costs will be, until we kind of structure it, then you'll have a difference.
Okay, while you're up there, a follow-up question to that. So the items that we, that we just saw, we cannot alter those in any way. The town meeting later on, when it starts, we can remove items, but we cannot add anything to it, and we cannot alter like a model number.
Yeah, unfortunately, you can't even remove items.
Why is that?
Because by your charter, basically, it's a yes or no vote. So either approve the bond ordinance, because it's gone through the process where it's filed by the Board of Selectmen, that initiates the process in terms of approving the bond ordinance. It then, there's legal notice that's provided, right? So there's got to be seven days notice for the public hearing, five days for the town meeting, with the bond ordinance actually published in the paper, okay? So that's the ordinance that you're voting on. If you were to modify that, you then have to, would have to go back, firstly, you can't do it because the charter doesn't allow it. Charter makes it very clear that it's either a yes or no vote, that's provided in the legal notice, so it's mandated by your charter. And so that's, that's the answer to that.
Well, but then my last question, I'm sorry, is then, so if we found a used truck, we could not use that money for that specific model to buy a used truck?
Okay, well, just because you approved the bond ordinance, doesn't mean you actually have to issue bonds for the particular projects, right? Things can, things can happen where maybe the need no longer exists, right? So it's just an authorization to issue debt, okay? Doesn't, sometimes don't actually issue the full amount of the debt. You might get an additional grant, therefore, that's going to reduce the amount that you have to issue in bonds, right? It's just an, it's an authorization. So it really depends. Sometimes towns don't anticipate that they might be able to get some additional grants. That's going to obviously reduce the amount of bonds that you can actually issue.
But the items are specifically listed, is my point.
Yeah, you can't, yeah. In terms of, at the town meeting, you're basically going to be authorizing the issuance of bonds for these particular projects. Now, once again, when I say bonds, it includes notes, you can allocate among the projects, okay? There is that flexibility for the Board of Selectmen.
And just the roads, I believe. When I read the bond ordinance, I thought it was just the roads. That was my specific question about the trucks.
Well, it's actually, and I'll just, and you guys will all have the bond ordinance, but the last provision says the board may reallocate the appropriation among the projects, which includes the roads, the fire trucks, everything, so long as the aggregate amount of the appropriation is not increased. So as long as you do not increase the appropriation, there can be some reallocation.
So you can get a different truck, for example?
Or if the, yeah, or the contractor, you know, basically get a better price, right? Once you enter into those contracts, you might get a better price, it might reduce the cost, and therefore, you have more money if another project comes in at a higher cost.
But the truck is specifically listed, that's my point. The name and not the number of trucks. Can we get any other trucks, is my question?
Can you get any other trucks?
Right. Different trucks.
No, I mean, those, the projects aren't listed yet.
That's the legal question.
Yeah, you're adding, no, you can't deviate from the bond ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
What are the consequences if the bond vote doesn't pass?
I don't know. All these projects have been approved, so I don't know how that would be funded.
Taxes going?
I don't know. And it's up to the Board of Finance. They would maybe have to do a special assessment in January to pay for the projects. I don't know.
Okay. Of course, I've heard when we get to one, I assume.
Well, I'm, I mean, from the Board of Selectmen's point of view, I mean, they, this has been approved, and how we fund it is, this is the mechanism that was approved.
Okay, so that, to this woman's question, if there's a deal on these trucks, that there's a deal on your repeaters or your radios, and you save a million dollars, what happens to that million dollars?
We don't bond for the extra million dollars. We don't need, we wouldn't need to.
So you don't buy...
Well, we don't, we don't, we don't. So we're authorized to bond up to 7,750, whatever the dollar amount is, okay? So let's just say we go to buy the trucks. I mean, we've gotten estimates from state bid. I mean, these numbers all have backup against them, but let's just say a truck is $50,000, and we walk away with $48,000. When the bonds are issued, we don't need to bond for $50,000. We only need the $48,000 figure. And in some, because what happens, the reality is, some things are, you know, again, you do your best due diligence, you get your estimates, you do what you need to do, but some things might come up a little bit higher, and some things might come up a little bit lower. I mean, when we bonded the last time for roads, it's a perfect example, we put $2 million aside for one piece of McTigh Road, and we only needed to spend a million dollars. So the bond authorization under roads allowed us to add on additional roads to be able to do work.
So you don't actually pick the bond up to have an exact figure?
Yeah, that's an excellent, yeah. It's an excellent question. Once again, this is the authorization. Doesn't mean that you're actually going to issue all these bonds, and you will normally issue the bonds once you have a firm number. You don't necessarily have to have a contract in place, but you're basically pretty close to entering into contract. Build a firm number, because the one thing we don't want to happen is, you don't want to ever overissue, you don't want to issue bonds, and then you find out that actually you need less money. So once you get to the point with, you're ready to spend money for the project and issue, then that's when you're going to be issuing bonds. And that's why it's staggered, right? Because you've got a lot of projects here, right? You don't know, you don't have firm numbers, you don't have contracts in place for all these projects. So that's why you might issue one year, maybe eight months later, or another year, you're going to issue more debt, and then maybe the third year, you issue debt. You really get a stagger. You also want to do that so that it doesn't create a large increase in your debt service, right? You want to have that all be level so that it's payable and it's a reasonable payment. And that's what the municipal advisor will do with the town in terms of structuring the debt.
So back to my original question, I'm very curious, what's going to happen if it doesn't pass? Somebody should have an answer.
I mean, the fact that it wouldn't, I would be surprised. I mean, is this...
What if?
Then I guess we would have to go back, and the Board of Finance would have to make a decision as to how they would want to fund these projects.
And when, would that go before a referendum?
No.
It would be a decision behind closed doors?
No, it would be at a Board of Finance meeting, which is public. Everyone's invited. There's meetings that, all of this has been discussed publicly many, many times.
It doesn't get voted on again? Whose decision is it?
To go for...
The townspeople or...
Well, if we decide to go for bonding again, I guess they would have to decide how they would do it. Yes.
So a question. We, through the budget, if I was hold my budget, said this is the plan, I might not actually spend all the money that I set aside in my budget. That's what the town could do, right? It might not fund all of these projects if we vote this down, right?
Yes, well, that would be a possibility. That would be one of the options, yes.
So theoretically, we could both go, and then they take this up, by project by project basis.
We could, but there's many things that are in the works right now, so, you know, things have to get paid for. And again, going back to when we bonded the last time, we increased our bond rating up to AAA, and that's to do with our cash reserves and how we manage our funds. So we'd have to be very careful how we went about that and how we did that. Because, you know, we don't have, you know, we're a small town. We don't have a lot of commercial paying into our tax base. So we have to be careful how we come up with the money to pay for all the projects that need to be done, and whether it's fortunately or unfortunately, you know, roads is the biggest thing, they were neglected. Somebody just leaned against the light switch probably in the back. It was over by the door in the back, you leaned against the light switch. Turn it back on, thank you. So those projects, you know, there's, again, we can't do everything at one time. So the engineering, everything is laid out in like one, two, or three years of how they're done. So if these projects, if the bond is voted down today, no, then we would have to figure out how to pay for some of the immediate projects out of our current general fund.
How close are we to funding, how close are we to which projects are at the most needed? Based on what you're explaining here, as in we've got a lot of, a lot of projects are already worked.
Yeah.
Which ones should we give priority? I'm not talking about roads. Roads are better, I mean, they're...
Right, so the projects are...
That's the communications department, I understand, that is operating.
Right, right. All of them, that's why the Board of Finance, I mean, there's a capital planning committee that's been working, that works separately than the Board of Finance, that's been in place for about 25 years, could be longer, Sam Prom was here, or somebody from that committee could tell me, that looks at all the capital needs of every department in the town, and there is a list that they work off of. And then that's how we know how to put money aside every year, for example, to fund for town vehicles or to fund for fire trucks, and we do that. And basically, what was happening was, we saw these very high peaks of expenses to be able to do a lot of the capital projects that were available. The other piece that fell into play is, we were fortunate to receive quite a bit of state funding to be able to offset, that was Joe's point, millions and millions of dollars worth of work. So, you know, what's important, it's all important. I, there's other projects that are even on here that are going to need to be taken care of eventually. This is just, as Joe said, kind of getting us over the hump, so we can kind of get back to where we were. And by doing it this way and bonding, we were able to make a debt service payment of, I'm going to just use a number of approximately $550,000 or $500,000, instead of worrying about how are we going to come up with $2 or $3 million this year and next year, which would mean that our mill rate would be increased anywhere from one to two to three mills.
Where the budget's at?
Well, I don't know how we can cut a budget, because the town budget's been cut, and that's the problem why we're here, is because the money was never spent when it needed to, so we're playing catch-up. All those years, this is what we're doing, and we're trying to manage that. Yes.
Is there a common number of years that these bonds are set at?
Common?
If you're talking about all these different projects, there are different years associated with the different things that are on the list. So this road's 20 years, this truck's 10 years, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, usually what you'll do is, you'll mix, you can mix more than one type of project in a bond, right? You could have the roads, you could have the fire truck. Now, each project has a certain useful life. A truck doesn't last as long as a bridge, or a school, or a road, right? So that's all part of the structuring process. Now, bonds generally can go out 20 years, there are exceptions. Now, there's a new statute, and it was really designed for some of the more distressed municipalities, not Haddon, that can go out 30 years, only for a short period of time. It's not advisable going out that long, but technically, Haddon could go out 30 years, right? But generally speaking, we're talking about 20 years. If we're talking about projects with a very short useful life, like trucks, it could be 10, 15, but once again, we would blend that, and you would make sure that the trucks, the bonds associated with the trucks are paid off quicker than for roads or something that has a more, a longer useful life. Does that answer the question?
Yes. Yes.
There's a, there's a cost for bonds that are in town.
Right.
The bulletin seemed to indicate that there was going to be an 11% cost to the taxpayer. Is that a realistic number?
It's part of the bond money. I don't, I don't know if we're, I don't know, I didn't see the article, I can't, I don't know. I mean, Mike just went through the expenses of the issuance and what we need to do.
You, Mike, are you asking about the cost of the taxpayer or paying the debt service on the bonds?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's an analysis spend, I mean, I don't know if that's an analysis spend.
We're talking about a couple percent, or we're talking about a big number? Because the article seemed to, I think scared a lot of people, that taxes were going to be up 11%.
The reason we're bonding is to keep the mill rate and the taxes the same. That's the whole purpose of bonding. I mean, we're going to pay debt service. The last time we bonded, we got 2.73%, 2.73% on the bond money. That was very inexpensive for us to be able to do, $6.5 million worth of road work. And the debt service on that, when all the bonds were initiated and we looked at, and the lady west the question about the transfer station, we look at where the debt payments are. So we're looking at a flow, so everything's even, because we don't want spikes. We need the budget to run smoothly. I mean, let's face it, there's certain things that go up every year that we don't have control over. However, by bonding, that's why I use the example, I think the bond debt number that we put in for the budget for the Board of Finance was 510,000, sound about right?
For the new bond?
Yeah, for the new bond.
560?
560. So what we're doing is, instead of spending $2 million on capital projects, I'm just doing very simple math, I'm not trying to insult anybody, $2 million for a capital project to go out, we're only going to spend $500,000. That means that we're not spending $1.5 million in that year. But we would continue to pay that bond payment over 10, 15, or 20 years, to your point, depending upon the project. So that's when I talked about the spikes in the capital plan and what we had to... So, that's when I talked about the spikes in the capital plan and what we had to pay for. That's why we're able to keep taxes level and not increase taxes. Did that answer your question? Okay. Yes, Wayne?
Now, I think most of the people who are here, from what I understand, I don't follow the social media, but I understand they're here for the small issue within the money we're talking about, about getting too many vehicles in one year versus spreading it out, and if that would save taxes. Now, I think we, I've heard at some times that taxes did not go up this year. They went down for the school and up for the town, and it came out even. If the town went down as the school went down, we would probably pay $1 million less.
Well, unfortunately, we can't. And when I said didn't go up, the mill rate stayed the same. That's what I was trying to say. We don't control the school budget as many of you don't.
I know the mill rates stay the same, but as he was complaining, it went up 11% on the town, and it went down on the school, so our mill rate stayed the same. My point is, if the school went down and the town went down, our mill rate wasn't going down.
Our mill rate, I don't believe, would go down. We have $14 million worth of road work to do.
I'm talking about the town went down, it was $8 million. Was it 8 million?
A little less than 8.
Less than 8. $7 million, something like that. It was voted by 33 people.
It was a public meeting. I unfortunately was at my father's funeral that night, so I wasn't present.
There were 34 there, 33 went against it, I think.
That's our process.
It wasn't a referendum, was it?
No, it never is a referendum. It's a town meeting. That's what's in our charter.
It should be in our charter. If anything, with 1 million, it should be a referendum. We shouldn't have 33 people decide for all these people. I don't think that, you know, some showed us a nice person, he's pretty sure who it was. They're only here because there's a controversy going on. No one's voting up there, but I will, because I was a part of the social media. I was at the meeting, I think Mark Fong was here also. When there was 13 people at the end and 18 for buying all of the trucks at once, essentially six trucks at once.
So, the budget meetings are all public meetings for the Board of Selectmen. The budget meetings are all public meetings for the Board of Finance. The meetings are all public meetings for capital planning, and we have a town meeting for the budget that is always public for people to come to vote. So, I'm not really sure how many people show or don't show. Everyone is aware of the meeting, it's noticed, but I'm kind of thrown by the dollar amount that you're saying, because...
I think, I think I have it pretty right. I was at at least one meeting, a meeting on publicity, and I think from what I understand, I don't, like I said, I don't follow the social media, but there's a lot going back and forth that secretly are maybe out of trucks. Too much is being spent at once on something we don't need to spend on once, we can spread it out. I.e. the trucks. We don't need six trucks in one year and none for the next year.
So, the fact that a public works person got in a truck in a snowstorm and started the truck and it didn't run, and went out and took it, and then, or took it up and then had to go back and get another truck that wouldn't start, and had to go back and get another truck that wouldn't start.
I think it was $50,000 over three years. They just had $20,000 a year.
Right. The fleet, did you not see the numbers of what we're spending on maintenance every year on those trucks? The trucks are 16 and 17 years old.
I was at the meeting where I was asked, I think, I was just, what should I think? It said it was $60,000 for three trucks.
That was just three trucks. I didn't run the numbers on every single truck. I just took three trucks and asked Public Works to run, what do we pay in maintenance to maintain these trucks to keep them on the road?
I think we all understand, any year that we have, you have to maintain, except any money else. So, you paid up for three trucks, $60,000 for three years, $60,000 on a $200,000 truck. I mean, if I had a car, then I could get away that cheaply and keep it. But the point is, the major point from what I understand is the fact that we're getting all the trucks in one year instead of spreading them out like we used to.
Well, it's been, yeah, from what I'm, again, I wasn't here when we used to, but it seems that we bought all the trucks in 2003 and 2004, and we probably are going to get a better price, and, because I don't know if you have anything to say, my thought is when we're going to get all these trucks? You know, the roads need to be...
One this year, one next year, one next year.
Right. But when people want to know at 5:00 in the morning why their roads aren't plowed and we got a truck down, and there's, who are you going to call?
That's what I mean. I mean, if you make that as a reason, why are we buying the trucks? Why did we force it that at the meeting? It was a 13 to 18 vote, because a lot of people didn't come. And I'm sure if all of these people were here then, at that meeting, that would have been voted out then.
Mr. Sherley?
No, what else?
Yes.
So, let me get this straight. We have now a AAA bond rating?
Yes.
So, we're paying less than 3% bonding?
Yes.
So, if we didn't buy these trucks this year, had to buy it next year, we might have to pay 6% or 7% maybe?
Well, I don't think it would be that, I don't think it would be that high, but...
Can we get our, I'm just throwing numbers out to ask questions. The other question I have is, one of the reasons we have this AAA bond rating you mentioned is because we didn't spend all of our cash on hand.
Yeah, but you can't.
So, that doesn't leave us a lot of options for getting cheap money right now over a long period of time.
Yes.
With the AAA.
Yes. All right. Any other questions? Because we are about a half hour late to starting the other meeting, but I want to make sure you get all the questions in. Yes.
Will the bond be at fixed rates?
Yes. If the question was, will the bonds be at fixed rates? Yes. Yes.
This bond here, it's got nothing to do with the schools buying?
No.
All of the, the property?
No. So, the Haddon Elementary School is being purchased for $450,000. That first payment of $150,000 will be made after July 1st of next year, and $150,000 will be paid thereafter.
So, are we going to have to give more bonds?
No. That money can come out of our reserves that we have. It's $450,000. As far as the Rossi property, we're not anywhere near close to that. We received a letter to look at an offer to look to do anything on that property or to close on it or even do anything. Townplingers here, I figure we're a good six to nine months away from that.
So, there won't be any more bonds needed in the near future?
Well, today, we're voting on the capital improvements for the budget, so if there are other projects that are brought, they're not ready to go now. We've not gone through any process.
There's nothing we should be told about at this point in time?
No.
That's what, there's a whole bunch of confusion.
Yep. Yes. Katie?
So, I just have one more question to go back to what this was saying earlier. If we've got projects in this bond ordinance that have a high priority, for example, projects that maybe already started or are already works, as you noted at the P&amp;Z meeting, there was discussion about the Dublin Hill project having been bonded or part of the bond, and now we've got money, and this next bond is allocated to the Dublin Hill project, it's already underway. Why have we lumped those urgent projects that are getting state grant money with the other projects that we're unsure about?
I'm not following...
Like the trucks, for example, there used to be some issue with, so it seems like there are various projects as they're defined in the ordinance, and some, some of those seem like a great deal. We're getting either some page or we're getting certain grant monies that are offsetting the cost of things that are even more valuable to the town. Why are those projects being lumped together with projects that haven't been sincerely vetted? For example, should we be buying all the truck bonds?
They, I can let Joe answer, but everything's been vetted. It's gone through the capital, that's what I was saying, with, so the capital planning committee looks at all the trucks, the age of the trucks, the request to where things are, and then it goes to the Board of Selectmen for approval, and then it goes to the Board of Finance for approval. And what the Board of Finance, and again, I don't want to speak for the Board of Finance, is they were looking for the spikes in expenditures to try to keep the expenses down to not be able to have to increase what we were spending in capital. And knowing the age of the fleet and all of the problems that we've had with the fleet and all of the dollars that we're putting in to maintain a really old fleet, and some of the trucks are so old, we're having a hard time getting parts for, that's why I believe, and I could be correct, correct me if I'm wrong, why that determination was made.
So, can I just ask one more question? Chris, what percentage of the fleet does this represent?
We have eight front line dump trucks.
And we're, we're expecting six? Four?
Correct.
Four.
All done frontline. Four frontline, two trucks.
All right. So, yes.
I missed my question, and I think all of these projects are very important. I think we all are concerned with, but we live in a small town and have limited resources. So, there are other projects, I think, that many of us would also like to see supported? Will there be funding available? Apparently, we cannot take any excess funds from this bond project, so is there an anticipated way to fund some of the other things?
So, if you're speaking specifically about the opportunities that are existing in Higginham Center or...
Higginham Center and of course, the library renovation.
Right. So, all those things, again, Planning and zoning is working on all the things in Higginham Center. We're going to be having public input, we're having charrettes, different things for uses for Haddon Elementary and/or the Rossi property. We're looking at where we might put a new town garage, it's something that's been talked about for many, many years. All of those things will have public hearings and input and going through the process. And when those projects come to fruition and they get approved or however, or, you know, you don't need a budget process to get projects approved. We didn't go through the budget process to bond for the roads and to do the roads. We decided to do those projects independently, so the same process would be followed.
So, there might still be money available, which you anticipated in the future capital, one or two million per year for the next three years?
Well...
There might still be monies available? I mean, remember, by doing this bond, are we exhausting our resources because of the annual fees for bonding?
No, because the, well, you're going to pay one time before the bonding, then we're just going to pay back the principal and interest every year for that. But what starts to happen is some of the debt service will start to come off from the transfer station. I mean, there's certain things, you know, that we might be able to do. The whole idea is to just keep reinvesting in our infrastructure and keep reinvesting in our community to make sure that we don't end up where we are, because there was a big hole that we needed to get out of. Yes?
Mike, I guess, I didn't fully understand. I asked the question, but definitely not the answer. So, so, let's just say that we're moving into the town garage, and we need funds to purchase that property. So, would we bond that?
It would be up to the Board of Finance. How we would do that?
That's a possibility.
Absolutely.
And then, the other piece, when is, when is the transfer station done, mature, or whatever it's called?
In another, I don't know.
A year, 10 years?
15 years, I think.
Oh, 15 years. So, that's not something that you can be...
Well, the interest falls down, right? It falls down every year. So, you kind of cap it, and then it starts to fall down. I do have a schedule in the office. I'm happy to share it. I just don't have it.
Right. So, that's, that would necessarily affect a project like moving the town garage, so, because that's not 15 years. But I'm just saying, there are a lot of projects that we've been talking about, so many.
Correct.
And so, how do we, I guess I'm wondering, how, how do we...
We go through the same process that we did to fund all the other projects that we've done.
Right. So, so, I'm wondering, like, I just, because I'm, I'm really frugal, because I have limited needs, so I, you know, if I know, like, my car right now is, like, so old, it's going to die soon, but so, I know how much I'm going to have to spend for a car, and I kind of like have that compartmentalized as I need, like, my refrigerator to die too, you know what I mean? Like, I have to look at all these things so that when they come up, I'm prepared. And so, that's...
That's what the long-range capital plan does, though. That's what the long-range plan does for the town.
I just want to make sure that we're planning these other projects that are...
If they come to fruition, then we'll have to look at it at that time. I mean, these are, these are things that are just in the works now.
So, would, would the fact that we're taking up all these bonds affect the projects in the future? I guess that's true.
No, you can vote on them separately and bring them up and do what you want to do.
We just, we just...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, sure.
That's not how I would do it.
I mean, it's not, I mean, I'm not giving you a yes or no. It depends what the taxpayers want to do.
Because I'm, I'm just comparing this to my little, my little financial need for why you were about to question.
I mean, if, if it's a project like the votes of money that we're getting from Candlewood Hill, where we're getting close to, excuse me, I can't hear, $3 million to do roads, and we have to come up with $200,000 to do it, I mean, you find a way, right, to, to get it done.
Right. I just want to make, I guess, I just want to make sure that we're looking at a broad picture for all these things.
We are. Which is why I put Bill Warner at P&amp;Z in charge of looking at some of these really very important projects.
But does Board of Finance also look at it?
Absolutely. Well, they will. They're not, it's not been dropped to me yet.
No, but Board of Finance is not, yeah, look at the things that the planning is always doing.
Or not, they're, they're, they're corrupt. They're not even there yet.
All right. Just needs to be...
It's brand new. We're still going through the process. Yes?
It's rather a simple question, but I'm wondering, if we have this bond money, we get this, get the bond approved, all the money from the bond is going for these specific things, fire trucks, and the roads, but I'm wondering about other things in this town that also need a bit of money, that maybe, that are community centers, that are a way of life, they're just as important as saving our houses and everything else and not getting, you know, potholes and breaking our tires or axles, whatever you do when you go through a puddle. But what, for example, happens to something that brings our community, yeah, for example, like the library, the community center? Will or will there not be any money for this community center if everything is going with the fire trucks? It's pretty cool, because if the library burned, it would save it. Is there any money for the rest of these same schools that people are now comparing?
Correct.
Is there, or will this bond money be able to go through this?
So, this bond money, so that's operating that we pay for every year? The town gives money to the library to operate and do? So, all that's part of our operating budget? And again, your voices can be heard at Board of Selectmen meeting, in a budget process, at Board of Finance with a budget process. Everything is minutes tabled at every, or written down, so everyone can see what's going on. So, I don't anticipate...
The library coming in and all...
No, no. The library has an endowment that they use to help offset some of their costs, but The library has an endowment that they use to help offset some of their costs, but the town funds, I think it's about 85% to operate the library. But the library, to your point, is very important to this community. So...
The library is joining us without any labels, without any call...
Correct. But I think as far as those things are, we're not, I mean, unless the state can, I mean, again, it's the funding of what comes in. But we're pretty self-sufficient on what we've brought in and what we do. You know, the school, obviously, gets a significant amount of money from the state to offset their budget, but it's always a balancing act. Yes?
I think, just to clarify, the, the library, yes, that operating, I think, from the town, which is very depreciated, but we also have a capital building that has gone before the capital planning and has been approved for, I think, '21 and '22. But it's for renovation. It's not currently operating, but...
Right, it's separate.
And, you know, and that's kind of a worry. You spend so many money on trucks, not that they are important and needed, but then there's a lot of money left over for some other things, such as a lot of work.
Well, that's why voting elected officials to look at the big picture and looking for Board of Selectment and Board of Finance is important, because these are all the things that come up that you have to look at. I mean, it's just like running a business, that you, you know, you have to look at making sure things take care of. But I think first and foremost, we would all agree that the safety and health of the community is number one. We need to make sure that we're safe. So the roads, to me, are important. EMS is important. Fire trucks are important. And everything else adds to our quality of life. Yes?
So listening to these two questions, I think what they're really asking is, is there capital money set aside that is non-bonded, so that there's other things that come up that aren't at that scale? Would a library need $100,000 or whatever? Is there money set aside somewhere that's not bonded?
No. So there is money set aside in the capital budget. It is illegal to put money aside for projects that are not, you can't tax taxpayers on things like that.
Yeah, this is an example.
Yeah.
There's money, so to their question, if something came up, there's money somewhere that should get approved that is not bonded.
Yes. Yes, Lynn.
So let me kind of state my understanding. We have a number of expenses that the town has approved that we spent. The trucks, the roads, and a partial renovation. That's already approved. Tonight's question is, how are we going to pay for it? Let's put that aside.
Bond ordinance, yes.
Tonight's question is, can we bond, pay for it?
Yes.
Already approved projects can't unapprove, I guess. Let me put those aside. The question I'm hearing Liz and Mary Chee and Katie ask is, how do these other projects, small or large, go through the process that these three very important projects we're talking about tonight have gone through, to be reviewed by the Board of Finance, to be approved by the Board of Finance, and then have the Board of Finance say, we're going to use capital money, or we're going to put it up for bond? How do we get there? Because I think what I hear Liz, well, what I hear her saying is, there's a lot of projects and they never seem to get there. But today, all we can talk about is, are we going to pay for the three approved projects through a bond? Those are my two questions.
Yes. And, no, well, kind of the end. No, it's okay. So, yes, we're voting on what was approved, and to your point, and the other projects that come up. I mean, look at Scoble Home, look at all the other things. We go to town meeting and we ask for an appropriation, whether it's out of the unallocated capital or the general fund, or we bond and we get those projects done. So going to the meetings that the different boards and commissions are having and going through the process is how they get to the forefront, to be able to get funded and to be able to get voted on. And again, we're voting on our town budget right now, but anything extra and above that, we need to go to town meeting for, to get approval. So that's how that process happens. I hope I answered your question.
You did.
Okay. Katie, yes?
I just, to answer the second half of this question, I think a missing piece is that every year, each committee, commission, whatever, gets to put in their two cents.
Correct. From the capital plan.
For their, for their budget. So it's up to each committee in town to, before we're thinking, and to say, okay, next year, we want to look at X, Y, Z. Five years from now, we want to look at A, B, C. That report goes to the Board of Finance, and then the Board of Finance reviews it. You need to give backup, you need to give justification. The Board of Finance will then look at that shorter and longer term plan and say, yes, no, yes, no. So that's, all these projects that are not involved in bonding, these short-term, long-term, they're up to the committees. So we need public people to come to our meetings and say, I'd really like to see this project happen, because if you don't tell the committees, we don't know.
And that's when I referred to the committee with Steve, with Sam. And we have openings on those committees. So voices can be heard on all projects. It's all up to, you know, to Kate's point, every park and rec gets asked, the library gets asked, the fire department gets asked, the ambulance association gets asked, everybody gets asked. It's part of the process. Thank you. And I apologize, I'm just so in the process, I don't sometimes break the steps out. So thank you, Kate, for pointing that out. Yes, Bob?
But I would like to add, as I emphasized, what Katie said, the agencies are asked for at least a 10-year capital plan. If they're looking at any time, at least, what do I need next year for the next 10 years? Fire department typically, one year. And submit all of these to the town, to the long-range capital planning committee and the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance, and look at the total picture, and I think address some of the things you're questioning here. Is there money for other projects if we spend all this money for these? Yes, there is, because they're already in the operating budget. Now, what did you approve this year? We approved this year. Regardless of how many people did, have money for other capital-type projects in there. They just weren't the ones that needed the bond money made for.
Correct. Yes, Liz.
So I, I, I'm standing now. So I want to know, the gentleman who's the chair of the Board of Finance has, have committed, so it seems to me that a lot of projects that come up, your planning, just my little world, planning and zoning, that I don't think have been talked about much. I mean, I know Scoble's been talked about, but for instance, moving the town garage seems to be something that's come up recently. Anyway, but, so that, is that in the 10-year, was that in the 10-year plan?
Yes. The town garage.
The town garage has been...
Been in the plan for about...
So it's been in the budget?
There's been a line item and hasn't been funded?
There's been a line item. I'm asking this, John.
It's in the plan, not in the budget.
Yeah, and so it's been, it's in terms of what Katie or somebody over here just said, that there's projections out for five, 10 years, whatever. So have those things been in those projections? Those projects?
The town garage, there's a placeholder, but we don't have a real estimate, but there is a...
There has been placeholder for that, and...
For many years. Yes. Yes.
Just a quick clarification. So we used to do a five-year capital plan, and we switched to 10 years a few years ago, which lets us look out farther. The bottom line is, what we're voting on tonight is what the capital plan had presented to the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance, and these were the projects that they chose. They did not choose the town private, they did not choose the library, they did not choose any other project. So it is a political decision. So as I've mentioned to some of you guys, we want definitely go before these committees. Unfortunately, the capital planning committee did not come and present to either the Board of Selectment or the Board of Finance, so we didn't get to hear justification from them how they chose these projects. So going forward, I think there should be more communication between the capital committee, Board of Selectment, and Board of Finance, and that would help us get our, around the next 10 years, 15, 20 years.
Yes, John.
So if, for instance, we voted this down, would we be able to then go back, maybe this is what you go, and, you know, look at projects again and then come back to, you know, replacing some of the trucks? Maybe not all the same.
No, because this is the plan that was approved for a town meeting, so we would have to find a way to fund it.
So we could go back to that?
No.
Can't rewrite the law? Sure, sure you can, you can't rewrite it.
You can't.
If we went down, it would happen in years. We'd have to try again.
Because it's been approved by the town at town meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I mean, you've appropriated the monies.
What area?
You've appropriated the money. So if you go back to the Board of Finance, it's determined how you're going to pay for it. Are you going to take more money out of the general fund? Are you going to try to find grants? Are you going to find some? Now, you could go back through the process, undo things, okay, but you have to go through the entire process.
Okay. So can, yes.
I mean, it's feasible, yes. They go through the process. I mean, but...
How long does that process take?
The town meeting has approvals.
And how long would going through that process take?
Well, I mean, you can have a call special meeting, a call special meeting of, of the special town meeting. You know, I mean, and they can undo, like, you can pass an ordinance, bond ordinance, and then undo the bond ordinance. If, if there's a referendum, then obviously it becomes much more difficult, because you have to go back, if you don't pay for a referendum, go back to the voters. In this case, you could go back to the town meeting, you could vote to undo the town meeting, and you can have a new appropriation. But you'd have to do that. Now, you know, one of the comments was, do we do all, have to do all these projects? I mean, generally speaking, if the vote has approved the projects, you do the projects. Now, there are instances when projects, the appropriation might lapse, okay? Because circumstances change, it doesn't make sense, like, the building burns down or something, right? Then you might not actually expend the money as part of that appropriation. It will lapse, okay? That happens. So, I mean, to say that you can't go back to, the town meeting can't then, you know, revisit this, but once again, it has to go through the Board of Finance process, okay? Because it's an appropriation. The town meeting can't approve or appropriate money without it being recommended by the Board of Finance. That's just your charter. Okay? So I'm, I'm, I'm making say it can't happen, but it's a very difficult process.
Yes, John.
This is from my understanding, maybe helps. If I understand, it's directly the town operating budget.
Yes.
Which is our day-to-day budget, and it kind of is what sets our mill rate for the year, because that's what the amount of money is going to have to be immediately out of here. In our operating budget would be, and this is rudimentary knowledge, but a line item for debt service. And the debt, it's a, it's, we have a certain amount of money set aside for debt service, which would be financing, financing projects. So we have things that have to be paid for, which are each project you have to pay for. So we have, we have an operating budget that sets our mill rate. We have some things that are halfway through being paid for, some that are just even starting being paid for, whatever, some are going to drop out as new ones can come in. And then by issuing these bonds, we're issuing approval to do it, but not necessarily this year, so that we maintain the line item for debt service stays constant, so our operating budget stays constant, but it finances these projects to get them out.
Yes, but when you say the mill rate, the mill rate is a combination of both the capital plan and the operating budget, it's what we need to run the town on. But yes, to your point of the debt service is within the operating? Yes.
And that's how, that's how we're keeping things flat.
Correct.
We're putting it in so that our line item for debt service doesn't have to change again, as one bond drops out and someone drops in, and we can structure the bonds, some longer, some shorter, so that they can help.
Very good explanation. That's very good.
Yeah, I mean, I was just, that's excellent. I mean, basically, what you want is, you want to keep the debt service at a certain level within your, within your operating budget. And that will dictate how the structure of the bonds that you're issuing. I mean, how many bond issues you're going to have, what you're going to have, short-term notes taken out with bonds. But that, you know, you're looking at what can the town afford to pay in terms of debt service? That will dictate how you structure the bonds.
Yes.
I'm more sure about the debt service. Is that, is the debt service for the $7 million of the budget?
Is in the operating budget that was approved, yes. Yes. Yes, Sally.
So if we do not pass this bill tonight, is there a possibility that we're going to lose all that grant money or some of that grant money?
Absolutely.
Because that, I mean, should we take advantage of those things right now?
Yes, yes. She wanted to know if we didn't pass this bond tonight, would we have risk at losing some of this grant money that we've gotten? And the answer is yes. Because the TAP grant that we got, you know, they're looking for us to go to the next step for design, and we don't have the money to pay the engineers to do it. So yes. Yes, Dan.
We could also lose the interest rate if we didn't pass it tonight.
Well, interest rates are low, right, so...
But still, we all give the same interest rate for six months from now?
I don't know.
So we're taking a risk.
I mean, we just went the other way and no one expected it to go the other way, so I don't, I don't know. Yes?
There's plenty of money, we have plenty of cash to pay for the 20% proportion of all those grants. So don't think that if you vote no, yes, whatever, tonight, that we're going to lose those grants. We are not. It would take maybe a month, tops, to go through this process, again, with all the notices and everything else. And the Board of Finance can call a meeting at any time. All they need is 24-hour notice.
Yes.
What is the percentage of debt service compared to the total town budget?
Well, let's calculate that. Including this...
Yes. This is assuming that all the bonds are issued.
Yeah, assuming all the bonds are issued.
15.6. About.
Barb, do you know?
I don't have the, I'm just trying to find the information on my phone.
Is there a cap on the debt?
Is there a cap? What do you mean?
7.7 million.
Well, she just says 15%. Could it be 80%?
No. I mean, I guess you could, but you've got to go, I mean, again, we have AAA bond rating, which is why we get a lower rate, I mean...
Well, there's, there's, or that could be like... Yeah. Yeah, there's a, there's a state statute that provides that limits how much you can issue a debt. You won't be close to that. It's like seven times like the tax, you won't be close to it. So in terms of any statutory limit, no, you're not going to be close to it.
Because we didn't allow them to do it.
Yeah, you're not going to issue $7 million of debt either. It's going to be over a, like, two, three-year period.
Right. I meant, yes, you're...
As to the, I used to work in safety engineering, so I think, I hear, you know, fire department needs radios. I think of 9/11, wasn't one of the reasons that so many people, so many fires that were killed, was because their radio systems all screwed. They weren't up to date for that. And then I think in terms of these trucks, the safety, the age of them, are we paying, like, higher insurance rates for liability on these trucks that could be dangerous for our operators to operate?
I would think that the value of the trucks probably is much as we're paying for the insurance. But I can't say. I mean, what, you know, because I don't know, give me a value of a truck. I mean, we, we sold a truck not that long ago for what? $4,000? At the end of its useful life?
I have to go back and look.
Yeah, so...
It was next to the moon.
I was thinking that. That other thing that you are, the whole truck. I mean, are these things that are safety hazards, that, you know, we could end up with a huge liability, somebody gets permanently disabled because of it.
I would like to know if that wouldn't happen, is it possible for that to happen? It would happen with a fire truck, it could happen with a...
Yeah.
Right, right.
So a lot of these trucks have been depreciated out, they're not, they're not worth, I mean, which is why, I mean, one truck would get $18,000 to fix, it's worth four. So, all right, I'm going to make an attempt to just move on, okay? All right, so I'm going to call the meeting to close.
Should we make Joe's number that number?
Oh, I'm sorry.
4%. Did you say your truck?
4%.
4%.
That's county, that's county school budget.
That's the way it's calculated, total, not, not by Joe, that would be.
That's part of our budget.
So, all right, I'm going to, if there's other questions, we can do them during the town meeting. So I adjourned this. I could call the town meeting to order, ask the town clerk to please come up.
Hey, what's going on?
There are counties on the ordinance here, which you want...
Oh, my God. No good passes too. That's for sure. You want me to bring that chair over for you? Would you be okay? I guess I'll get that good name.
Can I have a motion off the floor, please? Yes, Sally.
I know, you're a partner.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
The motion off the floor was to nominate Harlan Fredrickson. It was seconded. Any other nominations from the floor? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Mr. Frederickson.
Hi. Scott, can you read the call, the reading for us, please? Give it a whirl.
I've had a combined legal notice, so I'm just going to repeat a little bit. Notice a public hearing and special town meeting, Town of Haddon, Connecticut, to be held August 6, 2019. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Haddon, Connecticut, the town, will hold a public hearing on the following proposed ordinance of the Haddon Volunteer Fire Company, Community Hall located 439 Saber Road, Haddon, Hickam, Connecticut, on Tuesday, August 6, 2019, and 6:30 PM. Notice is hereby further given to all electors and others entitled to vote at town meetings. Of the town, the special town meeting of the town will be held at the Haddon Volunteer Fire Company, Community Hall located 439 Saber Road, Haddon, Hickam, Connecticut, on Tuesday, August 6, 2019, and 7:00 PM, to consider and vote on the following proposed ordinance. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes of the town in the amount of 7 million, 7,000?
7 million, 7,000.
7,250 dollars to finance certain capital improvement projects. I got about a six-page legal notice. I was planning on just going to the end and not reading all these numbers, but if someone wants me to read them, I'll read them.
I think everyone's got a copy, and frankly, I think if you read it, nobody could write it down to keep track of them fast enough anyway.
I'm just going to go to the end then, if that's okay with the vote. The full text of the aforementioned ordinance is also on file and open inspection at the office of the town clerk for the use or inspection of any interested person. A yes or no vote on the proposed ordinance shall be requested of each elector in attendance at the town meeting. The vote on the aforementioned ordinance is taken under the authority of Section 3.7 of the Town Charter and Chapter 90 of the Connecticut General Statutes as amended, dated Haddon, Connecticut, this 25th day of July, 2019. Town of Haddon Board of Selectmen Liz Malardo, Larry Madgee, Melissa Schlot.
Okay, I'd like a motion that we just accept this as a call, that doesn't approve anything, that just says we all agree that this is what we're here to talk about tonight.
I'll make a motion. Excepted as presented on the sheet that's on the table.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second. Is there any question or discussion on that so far?
Mary?
Mary?
Okay.
Yes, Bill?
Is that, is this the only meeting, and is this the only business that is before this meeting time?
That is correct.
No.
No? What?
No, there is a vote on property for the Arnett.
Okay, I'm not here.
Person in the legal notice.
Yeah. Two seconds.
Time out, folks.
You better reread that part.
Please.
Okay. Okay, so we're back to, sorry. So, notice is hereby given, we're here to vote, a town meeting, the Town of Haddon, special town meeting of the town, held at the Firehouse, on Tuesday, August 6, 2019, and 7:00 PM, to consider and vote on the following. One, resolution per Section 3.9 of the Haddon Town Charter for acceptance of the donation of the Arnett property, 12.7 acre landlocked parcel to the Town of Haddon, assessors map 67, Lot 2, Haddon Chester Town Line, subject to CGS Section 8-24, review by Haddon Planning and Zoning Commission. Two, to consider and vote on the following proposed ordinance, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes of the town in the amount of 7 million, 7,250 dollars to finance certain capital improvement projects.
Okay, so.
I made a motion to accept the call as presented on the sheet of paper on the table.
Okay, so everybody will just withdraw the original motion in a second, and then we'll accept that as the correctional motion. Thank you. And a second by Mary York. And once again, that's just that we all agree that that's what we're here to talk about, doesn't actually approve anything. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Let's, the Arnett property, can we just cross that off the list to get it done quickly?
I made a motion that we accept the Arnett property.
We had the discussion about that.
Yeah, but you made a motion for it, and we discussed it.
I'll be happy to lead the meeting. So, we have, we have a motion to accept that item regarding the Arnett property, and was there a second? Sorry. Second by Mark Lundgren. Liz, do you want to just give us a real quick description of what's that?
I'm going to let Bill do it.
Bill, okay.
This is a piece of property on the Chester Town Line. It is surrounded, completely surrounded by a cacophony of safe forests and a 60-acre piece of town property. And it's a 12-acre piece on the town line. The Arnetts are not in, in the state. They have decided that they no longer want to own the property. We could, they could stop paying taxes, and we could go through a process to take it by propositure. They have agreed to deed it to us at no cost to the town. It's because it's surrounded by existing town open space, it makes sense that we just accept it as town open space.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? I don't. Hearing none now. A call for vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, terrific. Then the second item is regarding the bonds. The first thing I think I'd like to do is ask for a motion to waive the reading of the entire ordinance and just incorporate its full text into the minutes of the meeting. That would do away with reading all these four lengthy complicated pages that were all passed out. And from this point on, we'll just talk about passing an ordinance to issue bonds and notes in the amount of 700, 7,7250 bucks. Yes?
So.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Okay.
And are there any questions or comments on just that item of waiving the reading? Just makes life easier for us. All in favor, please say.
Who seconded that motion?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then next, I'd like to entertain a motion that we adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes of the town in the amount of 7 million, 7,250 dollars to finance certain capital improvement projects, the full text of which will be attached in minutes, and the full text of which is what has been distributed. So, I'd like a motion and a second, and then we'll open it up for your comments and discussion. Could I have a motion to that effect?
Pro move.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. You got that, Scott?
Yep.
All right, now we'll open it up to additional comments and discussion. I know there was a lot at the hearing a few minutes ago, but if you have additional things or fresh things, that would be certainly acceptable, yes?
Last question. Do we vote, voice vote on this, or do we vote by a show of hands, or how?
We can, I think, are tellers here tonight? No?
Show of hands.
Okay, then we'll vote by a show of hands, and I'll appoint a couple of tellers to count hands, make sure we get an accurate count. Additional questions or comments about this item? Yes?
So, I have two more questions related. First is, is there a timeframe that this money needs to be spent?
Sure, you want to field that?
There's a timeframe once, was, once we issue the bonds that it would have to be spent.
What?
There's a timeframe for when you issue the bonds that it has to be spent.
So, whether it's 10 years and 15? What kind of timeframe?
So, the way, at least as far as the, the bridge project, the TAP grant, all of those, and the next, there's a timeline we have to follow, by 2022 at the latest for Candlewood Hill, and I believe it's 2021 for the sidewalk. So, in the next two to three years.
For all the projects?
Mm-hmm. Some will go sooner than others.
And then my next question, I noticed the fire chief mentioned that there's a line item in the ordinance that's already been completed, the, the lot, the net. So, I guess my question is, if that's already been completed, has it already been paid out, or why?
At the time when this was approved at that meeting for the Board of Finance, the project wasn't done, and we had an opportunity to work with the contractor to get a better price. They also did the senior center at the same time, so we were able to save a significant amount of money. And we did have money left in the operating budget, so we went ahead and we did that. So, the parking lot in, for the Haddon Lake Fire Department is complete, and that money would probably be allocated towards roads if we needed to. But that project is done. It was just a timing issue. We just, we had money to do it, and we were able to save about $8,000.
And that could be?
It could be.
Additional comments?
$3 million for the roads also going to be spent in the next three years, isn't it?
For the roads?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Anything else? Yes. Registered voters in town, and property owners are also allowed to vote, you know, refer, all right?
Town meeting.
It is kind of a vote. Yes?
I just think we would be foolish to give up any grant money, however much it might be. Liz said we have plenty of money, but I think we, I think we should take advantage of that money, whatever it is.
Can you say that louder?
Oh, sorry, I think we should take advantage of the grant money. We should, should not put that at risk, no matter how small it might be. So, I think we should do this now. It's all been planned out. Everything is all set up. The capital planning has put this all together with, not political, I, I do, I'm sure, but with priorities that have been with input from everybody in town and all communities. And I think we should take advantage of it.
Yes.
When does the grant money begin to go away?
Liz, you know what, I saw it varies from different items.
Do you have the dates for various grants?
So, for the Dublin Hill Bridge, we were already committed, so we have to come up with that money one way or the other. The, probably the two that are probably at risk, again, the state, the River Cog's been asking for me back, they want an answer by June 1st, when we're ready to go for engineering. Because if we're not taking the money, there's 17 other towns that want it.
But if we tell them that we're reworking our assessment?
I can't speak for that. I, I'm not taking.
Possibly, possibly.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're a good six months behind on the project to begin.
So, June 2020?
No. We approve, they were waiting for an answer. They've already started, they can't do any more work.
So, we put this off a month, did we work this off? Do you think that there are any grants that we lose?
We could, we could lose the TAP grant, which is for the sidewalks, and Candlewood Hill, I don't think in a month or two we would lose that.
The TAP grant is from the state?
Yes, they're all from the state.
And, and, and we could lose that if we don't?
There's a possibility. I can't say. I mean, they're looking, they're.
They're working a deadline?
Yes, to have the project completed, but the engineering has to be completed, and we, you know, we don't live in Florida, we live in Connecticut. You can only do work when the asphalt plans open and when things are available. So, we can only really do work from April or May until September or October.
And May is that until?
By 2021.
What month?
I don't know. When the asphalt plans close, so probably October. And we're, again, we're behind.
Joanne?
She might say the correction on the asphalt plan. It closes in the first minute or so, first 10 days into September, so you've got lots of time. She wants this whole.
Any other comments? Yes. Okay, grab everyone's attention, please, somebody. It's tough to hear.
If we have to include the fact that next year, if we have projects for the Skomo Hope Factory, or HES property, or the Tom Crowning property, or Jailhouse company, we can come back together as a town meeting, it's down to planning, zoning, and board of finance, and vote money for both projects if they've been recommended.
I can answer that, yes.
It may happen in the future.
Sure.
I'd like to move to questions.
I'll, let me ask you to just hold that, and we'll, within five minutes, I'll entertain that if we haven't wrapped things up, okay?
She made a motion.
Any other, any other comments?
Point of order, she made a motion.
I asked her to please hold it, and she agreed to that.
Okay, I didn't see the agreement, I'm sorry.
Any other comments from anyone? If not, then let's go ahead and vote, and we will vote by a show of hands, please. Only if you're a registered voter in town or a property owner. If you're a visitor from another town for some reason, we're glad to have you here tonight, but you don't get to vote. And try to be as orderly and not move around while we're voting. It's tricky for tellers to make, make that count.
And the threshold is $1,000, the taxes.
Oh, thank you, okay. $1,000 of taxes?
It's assessment of, assessment, assessment is $1,000, yeah.
So, if you own property in a town of $1,000 or more, even if you're not a registered voter, if you have $1,000 of property on the tax rolls, you can also vote. Tony, would you be a teller? And looking for another good volunteer to be a teller. Ed Schwing, you want to be a teller?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You guys want to divide the room, or you want to each do your own count? Okay? Can I ask, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name, the lady in the white sweater, could you just step a little bit to your right, and a fellow with a blue, dark blue shirt just a little bit to your left? And that's, that's going to be the dividing line, okay? So, Ed's going to count everybody on this side. Tony will count everyone on that side, and Ed, don't forget to count those of us up here.
And if you're not able to vote, maybe come to the front of the room.
And please raise your hand, just one hand. Okay? Please raise your hand, just one hand, and please hold it up until we're all done counting, and, and don't move around. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
It's necessary.
It's counting again, so keep your hands up, please. And give your results to Scott. Okay, the same procedure, those of you who are opposed, please raise your hands. Send this out to our accounting firm, we have it tallied. Scott, what do you have?
22 tellers. Yes, 82. No, 37.
Okay. Very good, thank you. And a second. All in favor?